Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We call the Van Wert City Council meeting for January 24th to order. We'll start with an invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The invocation would be, "Lord, give our world leaders the wisdom to negotiate and settle their differences in the interest of world peace, worldwide peace. Lord, please give the city council guidance in all matters coming before them this evening. Lord, hear our prayer for all those who are ill and/or with otherwise affected by the COVID virus. We offer this prayer in your name. Amen."
Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Martha, would you call the roll? We have an absence tonight. Drew is out absent, so Martha is taking, doing the honor of taking the notes and whatever she has to do as a Assistant Secretary.
He's on the cat seat.
Otherwise, it won't be right.
I'm out of my comfort zone here. Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. Callis.
Here.
Ms. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Agler.
Mr. Stenit.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
We'll be looking for a motion to excuse Jeff Agler this evening due to illness.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Call in favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
We've got to call that motion, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Andrew.
Bill seconded.
Bill seconded.
Okay. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Mr. Callis.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Under comments and communications, we received a letter from Judge Worthington.
Do we have to first okay the minutes and the agenda today?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we should do that. Okay, everybody's received a copy of the agenda for this evening. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, one, the, under new business, the nomination for President Pro Tem, our council rules outline who holds that position. We do not need to vote on it or anything.
No, it's set out in the council rules that the Chair of the Judiciary and Annexation Committee is the President Pro Tem.
So we can remove that.
We'll strike that off.
Yeah.
As noted. Any other changes?
Don't think so.
Have a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Motion to accept.
Andrew.
I'll second.
Jeff.
Oh, I'm not supposed to call a roll now, huh?
Bad idea.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Callis.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone's received the minutes from January 10th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move to accept as written.
Andrew. Second, Jeff. Okay, roll the roll again.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Callis.
Yes.
Mr. Marshall.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Stenit.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Okay, under comments, communication petitions, we received a Judge Worthington's annual courts operations report dated January 19th, 2022. The report is available on request. Second communication was received from Mr. Jeff Clayton, Executive Director, American Bail Coalition regarding proposed Ohio bail reform. The document is also available on request. Any communications or comments from the audience? Oh, excuse me.
The council.
The media first. Council first.
Okay, any comments on those communications? Any communications to the council? Okay, now we'll open it to the floor.
I'll clear.
Okay. Administrative reports, we'll call in the Honorable Ken Markart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I turn the floor over to Ms. Hoffman, I want to just explain the timing. We tried not to bring things to council that's on a, you know, you must pass it tonight, but there was a meeting shortly after your last council meeting where I met with county commissioners and Amy Hoffman from Palmer Energy. She explained the gas aggregation, which is similar to what we have available with electric now. And commissioners have a luxury meeting twice a week, and so it doesn't back up on their schedule as quickly as it does with council. Since the filing deadline for the May ballot is February 2nd, this is the only regularly scheduled council meeting that you have between now and that deadline, should you choose to want to do this. So that's why it's seeming like a rush to bring it to you. This is Amy Hoffman from Palmer Energy. I want to have her come in and explain what this is about.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks.
So I work for Palmer Energy, and we are the energy consultants for the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, as well as the Ohio Municipal League. And we worked with you 10 years or so ago to put the electric aggregation on the ballot for the city. At the same time, they did a unincorporated ballot through the county, as well as some villages came on as well. And it's been very successful. We've had no issues. There's been savings on the electric side for those residents that are in Dominion East territory. And like on the electric side, if they're not in REA or a COOP, they can participate. So it's actually the very same concept. It has to be passed on a ballot to have aggregation in place. And that's all it means initially. And then once it passes, then we, as the consultant through the CCAO and the OML, go out and bid it out to multiple suppliers to get a competitive rate against the rate that you can get on your own. So that's what we do for electric. It's currently in place. I think the current contract ends in December of 2023, and we vet it out to multiple suppliers that we've worked with. And then in the case of the electric aggregation, now what's been happening is I keep the mayor in the loop. We have contracts that go two to three years of late. And when we get the pricing back, I present it to the commissioners, because with the electric, you ceded authority to the county, so that you're all together in one contract. It's the bulk purchasing power. The more residential and small commercial that you have in a contract, the better the rate is. So it's the same contact, concept as the electric aggregation. Only those that are in Dominion East would be an eligible resident or small commercial user would be able to be in the program. So it passes, and then we go about getting out the suppliers and getting the pricing. Also, just like electric aggregation, it's an opt-out, where a letter will go out to anyone eligible that says, "This is what the city, this is what the county is doing, this is the supplier, do nothing," and you'll be enrolled. And if you don't want to be in it, then you opt out. And as well, like electric, if a resident or small business is in it and they want to leave it before the contract ends, there's no early termination fees. So, very similar. You just have to go through the process of putting it on the ballot. You do that once, and then, once we see what pricing comes back at, if it's a competitive rate, then we move forward. But it's the decision of the, you know, city and county again. Even though you cede authority, it's really, it's the paperwork. So we have one aggregator for the county. Through the PUCO, you have to be recertified, so we take care of that paperwork and that fee. And it's seamless. We don't let anything just roll over. Before one contract ends, we go out five, six months before and start the process over again on our side. No one sees that until we come in front of the county commissioners and the mayor to show them what pricing we're giving back. Any questions? I did, it was very general, but it's mostly due to the fact that you've been doing the electric aggregation. I put in front of you from the PUCO just the facts of what aggregation is, and it's truly identical to what electric is as far as the process.
Ms. Hoffman, do you have additional copies of that for the audience, if they're interested in it?
I do not.
Okay, we can make some if there's any interest in that.
Absolutely.
We can do that.
Yes.
With regard to the mayor's comment, this is an emergency legislation we're looking for, but actually, we're looking to put it on the ballot. So we're not making a decision for the public at this meeting. We're just making the decision to put it on the ballot for the May election.
Correct. And just so that you know, the county commissioners have already done their resolution.
Yeah.
It will be on the May for the unincorporated areas of Van Wert, and it'll be on the May ballot.
And the filing deadline is, I think, February 3rd. Is that right, Mayor?
The 2nd or 3rd.
2nd or 3rd. So it's virtually a week from now.
Yes, yes.
If council chose, they could place it on the ballot at some future date, but since it's already going to be on the ballot in the vast geographical area, not as many people maybe, but all of the unincorporated areas in the entire county will have it on their May ballot, it might be nice to have the promotional materials available at the same time.
And so also, if you choose to move forward for May, we would do a couple informational meetings, if you like, where I can pretty much say what I've said and take questions. After it passes, you do two public hearings through Ohio Code that would happen after the fact. But honestly, the informational meetings are more important before it goes on the ballot.
Well, I don't know whether you have time to get it on before the ballot. That'd be May, actually.
Right. So we would set up some meetings in March or what have you, and then obviously, we can advertise it through media and so forth.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Hoffman?
Yeah, I've got one. What, what would be the scenario if the city were to pass and the county were to fail? Would the city have the ability to do this on their own?
Yes, yes, yes. So that's a very good question. So in this case, you would, we would have you fill out the forms to be the aggregator for the gas. And that's a governance plan that we pull all the information from the PUCO. We do all the, put it all together, and then I bring it in front of you to be signed. We send it back to the PUCO. It takes 30 days. It always takes 30 days. Submit it, 30 days later, it gets approved. And then at that point is when we could send it out for pricing. So, I mean, there's steps. By not having, I guess I'd have to do the governance plan anyhow. It would just be through the county if the county passes. So that's going to have to be done regardless. But it would just be a matter of who's doing that. So, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the council, from Ms. Hoffman? Any questions from the audience? Joe? Joe, Jared?
In terms of opting out, assuming it passes, opting out, will there be a website you can opt out from?
So every supplier is a little different. Sometimes it's a phone call. There are ones that have websites, or it's a mailing. And eligible resident is someone that's just with utility and not shopping on their own. Because if you've gotten into a contract of some sort with a supplier for a specific term, you could have an early termination fee, so you wouldn't want to just be, you know, you wouldn't want anyone taking you out of something that you could get charged. Now, what's nice is, you see our pricing, you hear about it, and you're in something that you can use at any time, and the rate is lower through the gas aggregation, then you can join it at any time and get the same rate. Just, and that's exactly how the electric is as well.
Any other questions?
Do you have any examples of these in place? What kind of discount or rate their contracts are compared to the?
Comparing it to the utility, like, so I'm located in Toledo, and we've had gas aggregation in place since probably 2003, 2004.
I've got it.
Mm-hmm. So, exactly. So, in, that's Columbia Gas territory, so what we have is a, it's not a percentage drop, but it's not a fixed rate. What we do is the adder or basis is what's fixed, and that's on the IMAX. So we are lower, I believe, 23 cents than Columbia Gas. So we know we're always lower than what you could get through the utility. What I can't tell you, and that's where the true savings are, is you could be with someone and you're not paying attention, which most of us don't necessarily pay attention to what we're paying, and you're in a six-month contract, and then it doubles because it goes to the, it's been called the MBR, now I guess it's being switched to the MRR. And that's where the true savings are. So you're being, you're-
So you're getting 23 cents off of there. That's an example?
Yes, that's what's happening there. Yeah.
Okay, that question was by Mr. Davis, for the record. And there was a question back there with this young lady. And your name is?
Susan McVeigh.
Pardon me?
Susan McVeigh.
Okay.
And when, if it's approved, approximately, how long do you think it would take to then implement it? Would it take six months?
So, it is typically a formal process, but with gas, if it passes in May, I'm assuming we will be looking at an October, November start, so it kind of starts with the gas season. There's really no reason for it to go in early, but most individuals are not using much gas, so it'd be more of a gas season start. Also, I'll also mention how we get paid exactly like the electric, in the sense that through the CCAO and the OML, we make 5 cents per MCF. So when we send out the RFP to multiple suppliers and we ask for, you know, put our criteria together, one of them being no early termination fees and so forth, they add our 5 cents for MCF. So if it's a fixed rate that comes back, or it's a fixed basis, that has our fee in it, and that's what we do with electric. In electric, it's 4.5 mini-mils. And so then whichever supplier wins this contract that has the best, you know, supplier gives the best rate, then we get paid through the supplier.
And we'll return back to the mayor for his report.
Well, everyone's done. Could like to thank her for coming, and since she's from Toledo, we're not asking her to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I want to make sure you have all your questions.
But I, the mayor has all my information, so don't hesitate to move down to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor. And Service Director Jay Fleming, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to report that I have an order, a resolution, I'm sorry, that needs passed tonight. ODOT is going to be doing resurfacing on South 127. That's going to come into town to approximately Sunset Drive, which is near Van Wert Propane. So since they're doing that in the city, then we are obligated to pay a portion of that, $22,304 is our commitment to that. But we need a final resolution passed, so they, and mailed back to them, so they can bid the project there in a few weeks. And that's all I have to report.
That would be on an emergency basis?
Yes. Mrs. Moore, we'll take that for during the streets now, if that's acceptable to the council.
That's good.
Until we get to that.
Okay, Martha, we're going to put you on the spot for a report.
Okay. I first have two invoices that need approved as of then and now. The first one is from Trojan UV for service lamp and ballast faults at the wastewater treatment plant, $5,256.60. And the second one is Treasurer State of Ohio for this 127 paving project, $22,304. So Andrew, if you can ask for those to be approved.
Can I approve them both on the same one, or do I need to run two separate?
No, they're both, I put them both on the same one, yeah. The only other thing I have is I have sent out to all of you two different training opportunities. The one we talked about at the last meeting was Sunshine Law Training. There are several webinars that you can sign up for. And the other one is new, but it's municipal, municipal league training that they offer, they used to offer it every two years for new terms. They have not, they did not have it for the last term due to COVID. But there are three different places you can go, Cincinnati, Columbus.
Cleveland.
Cleveland. They're on Saturdays. It's $75 per, if you're a municipal league member, which we are, there is money in the council budget to pay that $75. And if you would like to go and maybe go as a group, mileage could be reimbursed. The dates are March 5th, March 12th, or March 26th. The information, like I said, I had sent it out to all your council emails. But it's training for newly elected council people, and it just tells you a lot of things about how council is, not only works, but how it's supposed to work. So that's for you to look at. If you need help registering, you can let me know. I can get you all registered or whatever.
Now, Martha, that one there wouldn't count for Sunset.
No, it does not.
I thought I'd ask.
No, it does not. That's all I have.
Any questions from council, from Martha? Affirming audience? Hearing none? Okay, we'll go to Law Director John Hatcher.
Thank you, thank you. You know, the ongoing rubbish and trash issues have been progressing through court. I think, I think we're in a pretty good situation where the communication between law enforcement, the law director's office, and the community is starting to reach a point where things are, are being handled in a more judicious and efficient manner. People are getting, where people are getting the right information sooner, which has been helpful for everyone involved. It's caused less frustration. And I think, I think we're reaching a situation with the community that this is starting to work. So I'm very optimistic. I know Mr. Jared has made some requests regarding, some of the issues regarding that, and I think we've had an informal conversation prior to the meeting started, and I think, I don't have the statistics prepared, but I think it's probably going to bear out the theory that you and I had discussed about, you know, locations of where the issues are and, and, you know, the socioeconomic impact and that sort of thing. And what we choose to do with that going forward is something I think that would be a much, a very interesting and lengthy discussion going forward, but it's, but it is something that is very much evident, so. I hope that helps you some, Joe, in your request. But we are, things are progressing forward. We are doing everything we can to work with the, with the public. And in these situations, please contact us. Communication is always the best way to go. Most of these cases that have bad results are the cases where people either ignore something coming from us, or, or don't go through the proper channels trying to get the information back to us. You know, we work on those two problems, and most everything else could be overcome. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to take questions from anybody.
Oh, you're getting one of those yet, John?
Oh, thank you. I do have one other thing to go over. The president, yeah, President Council has reminded me. Regarding the American Legal updates, they're, in reviewing it, there's been an email sent out. You know, currently, right now, we get updated on an annual basis for the code. And it, it's, it comes to us in a bound form, but it also, online, is only updated annually. And that's something I'd like to discuss a little bit as we get going forward. And that is kind of archaic, to say the least. I mean, it's one thing to get a nice big bound copy every year, but online, people are expecting a little quicker turnaround. You know, right now, the most, on our website, our code hasn't been updated since December 31st of '20. So we're more than 12 months in a rear bonnet, and that's, that needs to change. And that is a conversation that either Drew or myself, or probably Drew, because I think that's probably more his, his responsibility, is to have that change. And it did say in here, in the different discussion points that, with American Legal, that we can, we can have the code updated online as often as every two weeks. It's not really going to change, from the way it read, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, it's not really going to change the price, because the pricing we get from American Legal is over how many pages of stuff we send them every year. So whether, whether we pay one bill or 12 bills for the same paper, I mean, it's the same paper. And so I don't think it's really going to economically make a big difference. But I think having something updated on a far more frequent basis is a much, makes much more sense, because I personally can't remember the last time I went through my, my big bound edition. I mean, I look online, either on my phone, or on my laptop here, or on my computer at my office. And I imagine most people, you know, access it that way as well, either through the city website, which has a really nice link and convenient link to the, to the city ordinances. It's just a much better way to do it. And we make all these changes to these ordinances, and we talk about them, and, but if people can't get there and read them for 14 months, that makes no sense. That, that, that's not, it's, it's not a, is a very effective way to go with the public. So we're going to, we're going to make a change with that. And that's something that we'll start working on.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
Can a city ordinance go against state ordinance? Does state ordinance override Black City?
Okay. There's a, there's a thing called, a state ordinance, if a state and a city ordinance contradict each other, the state ordinance almost exclusively controls. It's called, it's safely with a federal law and a state law. It's the same concept, okay? So if there's a direct conflict between a city ordinance and a state, and a state law...
Now, see, that's kind of why I'm here tonight, because I got a parking violation. I don't live in Van Wert. I'm a Pauling County resident.
Okay.
My son-in-law was working on my truck. He lives on 1002 Keir Road.
Okay.
Okay, he doesn't work on a transmission. He pulled my truck out at 10 o'clock at night, called me, said, "Hey, I got your truck fixed." That was on Monday night. Tuesday morning, I went to get my truck, and Officer Stevenson, I guess his third shift, issued a parking violation on my truck because they said they did not have enough stock. I, and this is where the miscommunications coming in, and I think things are a little wacky. They handed him the ticket, and I guess they got into it, so that was never placed on my truck. He told me he got a ticket for it. That morning, I went to the police station. I confronted Sergeant Borrell.
Okay.
I said, you know, "What's going on, this and that?" He tells me that your ordinance cites the property of it. I said, "I've never heard of that." Anytime you get a violation on a vehicle, my tags are legal, it's registered to me. I live in a Pauling County address.
Was it parked in the street or parked in a yard?
Private yard.
Parked in the yard?
It was, I got pictures of it. It's right- It's right there beside your garage. It was partly in the stone, partly in the yard. And I understand it's a violation. I've done paid the fine. I'm not going to complain off that. My problem is Sergeant Boroff tells me that it goes with the property. My daughter was cited, went into court. The court addressed the vehicle. Two weeks later, they sent a letter in my name to her address, which I don't live at. They clearly run my tags. They know I have a different address. You know, they're trying to contact me and tell me if I don't pay it seven days and the fines won't be borne or I have to go to court, pay court costs. I spoke to Lieutenant Wagel, I believe is his name today. He tells me it's their discretion, if it's on a street right of way, they cite the registered owner. If it's parked on a private residence, they could cite either the owner of the vehicle or the resident. I, I think some of the information that you're giving out is...
Contradictory?
Yes. And, and this is another issue. I've had, you know, I've had issues, like I said, in living in Pauling County. State law says if you park your vehicle, that's considered garage. And you probably know that. If you put a tarp on it, it's garage. I called the mayor's office and I said, why don't you park my car right there along Keer Road and I'll put a tarp on it? She's telling me it's a violation if it don't have stone on it. State law clearly states it don't matter if you got a $200,000 structure or you have the tarp, it's garaged. How could you guys cite somebody for a garage vehicle? If you do that, you've got to cite everybody at times. Do you understand my point? It's kind of a loophole and it's a catch point, too. I'm just a little upset that I got no warning, I get a violation, yet, yet I'm called four times on the neighbor, they have two vehicles in the yard, and this is a police issue. I don't, I don't think the process is fair, and I get it, life's not fair. You know, you go over here to Lenny's, they're right across the street from police station. They got six hundred tires behind their building. To me, I think that's trashy. I think that should be addressed. That's right their front door. And, and our business is exempt? I mean, even like Young's, I know they're just a transfer station, it's a big bill and a cardboard out there. Isn't that something?
Sir, if we could stick to your problem and get that straightened out.
I think it's all wrong. What I'm trying to say is the process, tell somebody don't have enough stone in their driveway. I know people have been cited for that, and people have been cited for vines going up their houses. I mean, look at the tires. And, and I'm not saying that, I, I think these are extreme, and I think they should be addressed first. I'm not saying just because somebody don't have enough stone and it's a violation, it shouldn't be addressed, but who gets aggressive adults? They've been to my daughter's house six times. I've called three times on her neighbor, and the cops have not been on her one time. And I got pictures.
Well, you know what? Here's what I'm going to suggest. You give the pictures to the law director. You and the law director sort this out, because the council's not going to take any action on your complaint.
Mr. Torman, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I guess I just don't understand certain things. Like I called, there's a vehicle, you know, I know maybe no concern to you guys, but on South Avenue of Shannon, Shannon, South Shannon is one of the busiest streets in town. You know, South Avenue is a side street, you can't park along it. Okay. There's a, there's a van that sits there that the tags is expired in six of 19. Three years. Two half flat tires and a custom tail light. They, they can go on my daughter's property and give me a $40 citation when I get no warning? I mean, and I think that's the reason I'm here, is complaining. Everybody told me, come here. I, I talked to Sergeant Boroff, I talked to Lieutenant Wagel. I'm not getting answers, and everyone gives me a different answer. Where does this start? Where does it end?
You're fortunate, because we have the safety service director who's responsible for the police department sitting in the room listening to your complaint. And he will try to help you straighten this out through the law director and you, and we'll get this thing sorted out in some way.
Mr. Torman, the pictures you have, do you have them digitally or do you have, like, hard copies?
Well, I have them on my phone.
Can you email them?
I know how to, but I can get somebody to try to.
Okay.
And, and, and I'm not trying to put the car in the hole for the horse. I did talk to Lieutenant Wagel before I come here. A very nice guy. We had a 45-minute conversation. I'm all for the effort that you guys put into town though. I just think I want to tell somebody they don't have enough stone in their driveway versus five hundred tires behind Lenny's and stuff is, that to me is an issue. It almost feels discriminatory. When you come to somebody's house five, six times, but yet...
And, and we are trying to work through all these. And I understand, you know, frustration. And we've been, we've been dealing with it. We're trying to, to work with everyone as best we can. We are.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I got one question on that.
Mr. Davis.
Sure.
Would you not get the door hanger first that says you've got 10 days to move the vehicle?
You're supposed, in most cases, well, not necessarily in the parking.
Not in the yard.
We stopped doing that.
On the parking.
Yeah. Parking in the yard is a decedable offense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I changed that.
That was one of the things that changed in the fall, Mark.
One of the things that doesn't show up the ordinances yet.
Yet.
Joe, you had a question?
Well, now that the initiating complaint is kind of out forced to the police, it's probably a good idea to start looking at what ordinances should not be enforced for a winter.
That's a conversation...
I mean, for example, concrete work. It doesn't get done until springtime. I mean, I tried to pummel through one year and it has all of the results.
Yeah.
Best case is to gravel it up and wait for a claim.
And if we have a situation like that, we'll, we'll try to deal with it in turn and, and we'll try to be as practical as we can under the circumstances.
Yeah, just ask.
Again, that's communication. Communicate with us.
I don't foresee having to do it again myself, but not having to replace two water lines in four months. But I think other people shouldn't have the expectation to have to, to do that kind of work in a winter month.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Jared. Appreciate it. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Not sure, we should have went to Vanmore. The past ordinance changing ward boundaries, right? Last week, when does that go into effect? Is that 30 days after signing?
Won't go into effect. Essentially, nothing happens with it until the primaries.
Yes, it does. Because as soon as that goes into effect, you've never had your garbage and recycling linked to ward boundaries.
And we still don't.
We don't.
Everything stays.
Not been changed. That's my question.
We're not in charge of recycling schedule. They've always been a five day a week, and we've always had four wards. So they've never matched and probably never will.
You're moving the boundary where first and fourth is. An extreme...
And second, and third, they're all, they've all changed.
That was my question. I'm sitting here looking at the ward boundaries that are moving, and I'm changing wards. Is, is this going to affect my stuff? No, okay.
You know, that's, that's a good question, Mr. Davis, if we could take up to the recycle and ask that question.
We'll verify, we'll verify that for you, Mark. We don't believe it's going to change, but we'll check.
Anybody who has found themselves in a new ward, for all practical purposes, the first time you'll notice anything would be a year from May, because that's the next city primary election. Like, for example, governor, president, I didn't change any of that. But if you're in fourth...
Well, I'm in fourth now, I'll be in first when it changes.
So, for example, instead of being, voting up for that seat, you'd be voting for that seat.
Yeah, I understand that.
But you asked me when it would go into effect. I'm telling you.
Yeah.
But his major concern, I think, is garbage at this point.
But that's what I'm telling you.
That's all it does.
Don't change.
It's city elections. That's it. Doesn't have anything to do with garbage, doesn't have anything to do with recycling.
It's always been a long ward, but...
No, it never has. Never.
It is Monday.
Ever.
They do it five days a week, so it has, it's in and out at different wards.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions from the law director? Hearing none, we'll go to committees, and we'll look at health, safety, and service. Bill Marshall, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of segues from what we're discussing about trash and garbage and things like that. I think I would like to draw the council's attention into maybe looking into this area a little bit more deeply this, this coming year. And on your desk, I did place a Ohio Revised Code 532104, which is landlord obligations. And I would like to, I don't want to discuss it tonight. I'd like council to look at the ORC and see if there are any areas that we want to look at possibly reviewing that might have to do with how rents are being applied or how, and we can also take that a step further, pickups as well. We're having some issues with pickups of garbage in town, too. So I'd like this to be sort of a, if you will, probably a half an hour discussion on this, because I think we could easily do that first time around, just to throw things out and talk about what the potentials are and some of the things that we could do as a council to maybe make this a better situation as far as how we administer that area. So if you would review that, and if we could set that up for, I believe, our next council city...
14th. 14th. Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day. Six o'clock?
Well, we have a prior request for six o'clock, and that would be judiciary, and our finance committee will be asking for that timeframe.
Oh, you will?
To discuss the airport.
Okay. Then we'll go to the next...
14th? Oh, yeah.
Twenty eighth.
7th, 28th.
Yeah.
Okay. So that would be committee meeting.
Is it six o'clock, Bill?
Yes. And the one on the 14th, that's at six o'clock as well?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to finance.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay, any... Conclude my report.
Any question in council for Mr. Marshall?
Yeah.
Bill, any questions?
Oh, excuse me, go ahead, there. Technically, I'm not council, I guess, but did you say you wanted him to focus in on number five? You asked me to highlight that, right?
I think you're, I mean, at that code, it's the number five section. I think, I think you'd put a highlight beside that number.
Yeah.
I think that's what we would want to focus on, what that would be.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Marshall from the council? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move on to economic development. Jeff Callis.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, economic development has no report tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Callis? From the audience? No. Moving on to parks and recreation, Ms. Judy Bowers. And welcome, Judy, your first meeting.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation has no report tonight.
Okay, moving on to Jeff Agler. Jeff has been excused, so we'll go to Andrew, who is vice chair for that committee.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items on the agenda for finance tonight. First is passing this then and now for Trojan UV and Treasurer, the State of Ohio, for the 127 paving project. I'd like to make a motion to pass that.
The amounts would be?
$5,256.60 for the lamp and ballast faults. And for the paving project, $22,304 is our portion of the project that ODOT will be completing.
That would be a motion, right? It's a motion?
Yes.
We have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Callis?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. My second item for tonight for the finance committee is going to be to schedule a finance committee meeting on February 14th at 6:00 PM. This will be in regards to the airport's funding request. I, yeah, we'll talk through the whole situation at the meeting, but go ahead and schedule that for 6:00 PM, that on the 14th. My third item is something that I had sent out to council members regarding our budgeting process and something that was pointed out to me by a constituent that I think Matt's at least bringing up and having a conversation about. The, the email that I sent to everybody had a, had a couple examples on it. But what this is pertaining to is the use of things, of terms in our budget that are bland, miscellaneous expense, other, other things that are not defined, and finding a way that we can define those terms or find a way to maybe create a document that would define what is coming out of those accounts that are labeled miscellaneous. That way, it's easy for not only the incoming council people, but anybody who decides to view the budget on the website. There, in our 2020 budget, which is the only budget that's on the website right now, there was no 2021 budget ever updated for some reason. But the 2020 budget that's on the website, there was 24 accounts that just listed miscellaneous expense. And they were up to $150,000, all the way down to 500.
I can address that for, just, I'll give you a little bit of information. Every department has a miscellaneous budget, and it's, it's for what doesn't fit into any other category. The biggest things that go into miscellaneous, that are big dollar amounts, are paving, because we never know...
At the time, we don't know.
We don't know how much we're going to do. And then sometimes, some of the departments are going to purchase equipment, or they want to purchase equipment, but they don't know what's going to be available or whatever. And those things will go into miscellaneous. But it really isn't...
Secret.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not, I understand it's not secret. I don't, I don't think there's anything nefarious going on.
I guess I'm just saying I'm not sure how you're going to define it, because miscellaneous is just that, it's miscellaneous.
I, I sent you a, a, an idea of what someplace else is doing, and it's basically just a cover sheet to the budget, and it says, this account covers, you know, street department, miscellaneous funding, and then next to it, it has computer purchase, office supplies. You know, anything that comes out of that account just gets a little line that says, this is what came out of this account.
And we can do that looking back, but going forward, you're not going to know.
Sure. Right. But looking back, we can see what's in that, what came out of that account previously that would give people a better idea of what did come out of that account the previous year and moving forward. And this is something that I think, you know, obviously, we can talk about and try to come up with a best practice, whatever way we want to do it. But I would like to get some sort of legislation in place that way. The new auditor that comes in when Martha leaves has some guidelines on how to use those accounts and those terms.
But those terms are pretty generic in all budgets.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying they don't exist.
Corporations have the same terms when they don't know exactly what the expenditure is going to be, but they want to put some reserve away in case there is an emergency appropriation that's required.
Right. Like I said, looking back, you can put in what it was used for in the past.
But I, I can say in my personal budget, I mean, I have usually, I don't know if it's even $1,000 in miscellaneous, but from one year to the next, it's probably not the same things. The indigent burials that we paid last year, I paid that out of miscellaneous budget.
Right.
And, I mean, so...
So I'm not asking you to create an account that says the indigent burials. I'm just saying...
I'm just saying miscellaneous is miscellaneous.
Well, but I think we've got to be careful here, because every budget has its supplies and materials, and it's thousands more dollars in miscellaneous, and it could buy hundreds of things.
So I, I, I guess I'm not looking for this to become a, an issue. I mean, it's being done in other places. So there's no reason that we can't do it here.
I understand that, but what are, what's the crux of the problem here?
People see a, a budget that has a bunch of miscellaneous items on it, and they don't want to have to reach out every time to find out what's going on with that money.
But most of them are small.
Yes. It's been pointed out to me twice by two separate people.
So, Andrew, are you looking to say when the budget, like the 2020 budget, then we go back and add what we spent? Or are you saying when a new budget comes in? we go back and add what we spent, or are you saying when a new budget comes in?
I would, I would like to see it that way. I would like to see, this is what we're projecting is going to come out of this miscellaneous account. If that's not possible, I would like to see one in retrospect, that we had this account in place last year, this is what came out of it, and then every year after that, we update that document.
So if you did one for the upcoming budget, paving, are you looking to have a dollar amount or just paving?
No.
What I sent? Office supplies?
What I, what I sent out has, has it laid out the way that this community did it. It had account number, so which would tie it, street department miscellaneous expense, it says account number, and then off to the side, it has everything that came out of that account as far as, you know, we bought office supplies, we bought computers, we bought, you know, new tires for a truck, or whatever, you know, whatever came out of that account, it could be any number of things.
That's natural spend.
Right. But, yeah, looking back, that's what came out of that account.
I think that looking back might be something we talked about a couple years ago. Martha, I, it was through the state, what was called checkbook or something like that?
Yeah.
That, that anybody can just go on and see what we've spent.
It can, but it doesn't give them the description.
So what?
It's going to, it's going to show $2,000 we spent out of supplies and materials, or...
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, the question is, what supplies, what materials, you know?
No, I would just try and think of something that's already in place, it wouldn't be that much.
Well, and even, even to go back, like, if I went back and looked at everything that was spent out of everybody's miscellaneous budgets last year, I'll be able to see the vendor that it went to, but I won't necessarily know what the description was.
I'm not going to have that much detail.
No. And it's, nobody has, the two, we have a couple of big miscellaneous ones, like paving for one, but most of them are small. They're small amounts, but I can definitely look back at last year and see what I can come up with, if that's what you want.
I mean, it's, it can be dangerous to speculate, but I'm going to ask you to.
Do you think the person ended up getting their question answered, or?
The person who asked me about this?
Yeah.
They pointed out this specific, they wanted to see this changed. It wasn't a specific thing they were looking for. It was they see an issue, they came from another community, they saw that it had been done differently in another community, and they think it should be done here. So this, this was the scenario that they brought forward. It wasn't anything other than that.
And I don't know the other community. I was just thinking of the best allocation of our resources, might be better off to answer anybody's question that calls, because we do have a few people.
Yeah.
Wish those people would call me or come see us.
I understand. Some of the larger places have staff dedicated to those things. We already have the software in place to deal with that, and since we don't, sometime, and I'm not saying this person did it, but I know I've sometimes had that, where someone will say, well, we can't find an answer. So, well, who'd you ask? Nobody.
Yeah.
And if it's that a little bit, or just, so ask.
Well, I.
Don't necessarily need to put something in place for 11,000 people if 11 people want it.
We're, we're moving toward a, a time when everybody has everything at their fingertips. They want to be able to find that information when they want to find it, and they can do it with anything else, except something that is public knowledge that they should have access to, to go to and just find it. And they shouldn't have to call Jay or Martha and worry that they're hindering another project that's going on or taking up time of somebody who's got something else going on, when they can just click on the website and find it.
We welcome that, but I got to say, if that's a concern, we just completed an entire calendar year that no one knew that the, the budget was two years old that was on the website. So that's how much the community is paying attention to what we're putting out there.
Well, let me interrupt, Jay. If you're looking at something that says miscellaneous expense, and you bought paper, and you bought a computer, and you bought this in 2001, they're not going to be, probably not going to be the same expenditures in 2022. I agree. So what good does retroactively seem, what commodities we purchase?
If you remember when Mr. Callis asked that, I said I would rather see one projective, but I know that's difficult to do.
How can you project that? I mean, I'm asking, I don't know. I've done a lot of budgets in my time.
We, we budget those accounts every year for, you know, just to have 15,000 in an account to be used for miscellaneous items, we can list what's been done previously and kind of get an idea of what could potentially come out of that account. I'm not saying we're going to get it 100% right. We're clearly not going to. But right now, we don't, we don't know at all.
Well, let's leave with the, let's do this. Let's leave it with the auditor, see what, maybe she comes up with an suggestion or something.
I can just tell you, last year, the biggest expenses out of miscellaneous were court projects, so that's, I don't know what kind of detail you're going to get out of those.
Yeah, court projects.
Yeah. Because they don't, the court has a lot of different funds, and they don't have regular budgets every year, so they many times will just take it out of a miscellaneous category. Parks had a big expenditure out of miscellaneous. I'm not real sure what that was, and I'm sure it was something that we didn't have planned, I don't know.
Grant came through, may have, might have, or we struck some great money.
Yeah. I have a question for Andrew. Did they look at our budget, the city budget, and they came up with this, that, you know, we get more clarification from the city we came from to what we have here? Because I've talked to some people, and they felt the same way.
He looked, he looked at our budget and saw that, that miscellaneous expense popped up in multiple years in multiple different areas, and he thought that if it was, if it was a consistent thing that was coming up year after year after year out of the same account, and it was a miscellaneous expense, why would we not just create another line item for it? Make it its own account? If we're replacing computers every year, make a computer account.
No, computers do not, computers never.
That's an example. I'm just, I'm just throwing an item out there that could be.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's, it's in miscellaneous because it is miscellaneous. It's not.
Well, it's, I think, sort of given the answer, if whoever was talking, you said if it's the same thing year after year after year, creating a account.
Right.
And that's why we don't.
No.
Because it's not the same thing.
But, but we don't know that. The public doesn't know that. That's what he's getting at, is he doesn't know that. When looking at the budget, he doesn't know what's coming out of that account. If we had a, something that said, this is what we paid for out of that account, he would then know.
But the budget won't tell you that. The budget's projecting.
That's just like, you don't know what comes out of supplies and materials. You don't know what comes out of repair and maintenance. You don't know what comes out of equipment. So how is that different?
I, I'm bringing up what a constituent asked me to ask about.
I'm just saying, how is that different?
I want to clarify. You said you sent out an email. Was that this month?
Yeah. I made, I made out of.
Oh, you sent it to council?
I sent it to council, yes.
Okay.
I forwarded it to Martha before the meeting.
Today?
Yeah, like five minutes before you walked in. I realized I didn't send it to you.
Where is it?
I, I haven't sent it to everybody yet. I can send it right now.
In, in closing.
Yes.
Forget about miscellaneous payment, that's always a big one. Water plant has the second largest at 17,000. Council has the third largest at 14,000. Outside of that, they're all down in the 1,500, 2,000 dollar range.
And I don't think that's unusual. I mean, you, you can buy, you know, computer, computer printing rolls for, they're 150 or 200 dollars a piece.
And, and really, and truly, in my office, I mean, we, when people charge something to the wrong category, we make them change it. If they're buying a lawnmower out of supplies and materials, and it should be out of equipment, we make them change it, so.
And we buy computers out of equipment.
Yes, you do.
Not miscellaneous, so.
Well.
But I can, I can look back and see.
I just, I just forwarded it to everybody.
Okay.
I've got one question, more.
Mr. Davis?
If you're buying out of miscellaneous, are you using purchase orders to do it?
Yes.
Then you have a record of what you bought.
Well, she's not saying, she's not saying she doesn't have a record.
If, if somebody wanted to know what it was, you could come back and say, here's our purchase order.
Yes, I could.
To, to the mayor's point, they can call and get that information.
But they haven't even what to ask for.
Ask for the miscellaneous account or line item, whatever. It's right there. What was that expenditure?
That's my point. They have the information that they can give easily.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what you tell your council.
That's what you want, current information. You don't want last year's information, doesn't do you any good. You know, but we'll leave that discussion open for a while, and then Martha will address that next meeting, if she will.
That is the final thing for finance.
Any, any further questions from counsel for finance? Any further questions from the audience for finance? Hearing none, we'll move on to property and equipment. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. President. The property and equipment has nothing to.
Report?
Report.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to streets and alleys. Julie, Ms. Julie Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion for the law director to prepare an ordinance, resolution number 22-01-010.
And that's for, just a quick explanation of what that is?
This is for the final resolution for the city of Van Wert to approve legislation for paving work to be completed on U.S. Route 127 from the southwest corporation limit to approximately 1,050 feet north of Sunset Drive, excluding pavement markings lying within the city of Van Wert, and to grant the mayor the authority to enter into.
Julie, may I interject? There's been, there's been a change. Hey, I did a change. Sorry. Changed the title.
Yeah, you don't have to read all that.
Yeah, just, one 27 paving project.
Oh, 127 paving project, thank you.
I'll second.
All right. I have a second. Julie made the motion for that, legislation of 22-01-010.
This is to prepare.
This is to prepare, we don't have a number yet.
And it's an emergency, so we're going to have to do, suspend the rules.
Okay. So, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, we're going to.
Uh, yeah.
Suspend?
I would like to make a motion to introduce this ordinance before council.
I'll second.
Am I doing a separate sheet for every?
Well, I think so. You have to, because it's introduction.
Okay, wait a minute. Introducing.
Introduce as an emergency.
Introducing.
Okay, I would like to introduce this as an emergency. I'd like to make a motion for the law director to.
We've got to do this first. We've got to vote on that. We've got to vote on the proper, where they introduce.
We've got a motion and a second. We're going to ask for a vote on the suspend the rules, is that right?
That'll be after we vote for this.
Introduce.
Introduce.
Okay. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes. Then we suspend this. And then we vote first and final.
Okay.
Since the ordinance was prepared as an emergency, I'd like to, like to motion that the statutory rules be suspended. I would like to make.
Second.
Okay. An emergency requires two-thirds voted at council, which is all five members this evening.
Yes.
To pass.
Yes.
So we have a motion right now to suspend?
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that ordinance number 22-01-010 be passed on its first and final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, take the vote.
Mrs. Moore?
You've got to, you've got to read it.
You got to.
Read it before final passage.
Ordinance number 22-01-010, final resolution for the city of Van Wert to approve legislation for street construction to be completed on U.S. Highway 127, to grant the mayor the authority to enter into any agreements with the Department of Transportation and the furtherance of said project, and declaring the same as emergency. Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
Any, any other?
I have nothing else to report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the, Ms. Julie Moore? From the audience? None?
Oh, I'd like to make a comment. I think the street has, they've been doing a marvelous job keeping the snow real in the last two days, so great work.
How about that?
That's good to hear.
Julie, two weeks on the job, and listen to compliment. Okay, thank you very much. Judiciary and annexations. Andrew Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing on the agenda this evening is the aggregation program that was spoke about I would like to make a motion that we have the law director prepare an ordinance that would place this aggregation program onto the ballot in May.
Got a motion? I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
You got to read the motion for me?
No, this is to prepare.
Okay.
Don't confuse me, Jerry. Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Um, and I, I need to amend. Need to do that as an emergency, so if we need to go back and re-vote, we can.
I think we should do that.
Yeah. Needs to be done on an emergency.
Read, okay. So we'll amend it? We're asking for an amendment? We have a second, only amendment?
The same person who seconded the original motion has to second the amendment.
I'll second.
That's great. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Stinnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, the law director has prepared, um, ordinance 22 dash 01 dash 011. I would like to introduce that before council.
Jeff, second it, any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Sten?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Uh, being that this is on, an emergency, I would like to suspend the statutory rules.
Mr. Callis, second. Any discussion on the suspension? Hearing none, we'll vote on this suspension.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Sten?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And I would like to pass ordinance number 22 dash 01 dash 011 on its first and final reading.
I'll second.
Okay, any question on the motion? Okay, we'll vote motion.
Is that this one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Ordinance 22 01 011, first and final resolution for the city of Van Wert to approve all actions necessary to affect a governmental natural resource aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to ORC 4929 dot 26, directing the Van Wert County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors and declaring the same as an emergency. And we're passing this on first and final?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Sten?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Uh, that is the only item for judiciary and annexation this evening.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, we have health, safety, and, health, service and safety, code enforcement. Do you have anything there?
I have no report.
All right. And we also had, under unfinished business was finance, airport funding. We've addressed that previously. There's a meeting set up for that on February the fourteenth at 6:00 P.M. Under new business, we had listed the American legal updates and I believe the law director went over those, but there are no further questions on those. And I think it's something that we ought to review as a council to see what we want to do in the future as far as updating these, uh, ordinances.
Can I suggest something? I'll get with Drew once he, he's back from being ill and, and maybe we'll set something for March or something, after. I don't think it's as, as pressing as the two committee meetings we've scheduled, but we could probably schedule something for after that and, and lay out some options for council to, to review and maybe approve.
That'd be good, thank you. Okay, consent agenda, well, let me see.
No consent.
No, not tonight.
Okay, there's no third and final either. So we'll go on to second reading advisory for ordinance number 22 dash 01 dash 04. We have to do one at a time?
Yep. Yes.
But is that the whole?
Yes, that's the whole title.
That's the whole title, okay. Ordinance 22 01 004, an ordinance changing the first parking space east of the crosswalk on the north side, the 100 block of East Central Avenue to a handicap parking space. Advisory vote. So, I just do these in any order?
Yeah.
Apparently, okay.
Okay, just start with A and work your way down to Z.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Sten?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, advisory, second reading on advisor, second reading advisory on resolution number 22 dash 01 dash 006. A special resolution to recognize Joy Mergie for her term of service for the, to the city of Van Wert, Ohio, and declaring it an emergency. That's the ordinance, just take a vote on this advisory.
Okay, we're going to read that three times?
Apparently, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.[1650.12]